Excellent. Well, call into order our December 28th, 2021 combined special meeting and work session. Notice to the public that the city council may vote to go into executive session for legal advice on any of the agendized items. Ms. Salzberg, roll call, please.
Mayor DC.
Here.
Vice Mayor Daggett.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan.
Present.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Salas.
Present.
Councilmember Shimoney. Councilmember Shimoney?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you. And Councilmember Sweet?
Here.
Excellent. Well, hopefully I can call upon those on council or at the dais to help us with the Pledge of Allegiance mission statement and land acknowledgement. Councilmember Salas, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I'm honored to do so.
Thank you. Thank you. And Councilmember McCarthy, would you please state our mission statement?
Yes, Mayor. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you, Councilmember. And Councilmember Sweet, our land acknowledgement, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Great, thank you. And I want to apologize that I'm not in there in person like I would want. I did have a known exposure late last week to COVID. And though asymptomatic, I wanted, out of an abundance of caution, not to be entering chambers with everyone. So I apologize for my lack of presence, but it was just due to public health considerations. With that, we are down to agenda item number four, which is our city manager report. City Manager Clifton, take us away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, good afternoon. The report before you at this meeting is a very abbreviated report. I hope that's okay. Reflecting the holiday season that we're in, wishing everybody happy holidays. The report only has a couple of items to note, although it is appended by three monthly reports from our Economic Vitality Division, our Water Services Division, and our Sustainability Section. In a minute, I will invite folks from any of those divisions and sections to speak more to these reports if they would like. No obligation to do so, but maybe a very high-level overview. Back to my report. The the report calls out a recent award as received from our finance team upstairs in Management Services. The city received notification that it is receiving the Government Finance Officers Association Budget Award. This represents, I believe, the 28th consecutive year that this is happening. I do not want to steal the thunder from others who may want to present more on this in the future when that award is received. I just wanted to take the opportunity to give kudos to Heidi Derryberry and the finance team for once again reaching that very high level, that high standard of budgeting. So congratulations to them. Counsel, also in this manager's report is an update and a draft letter. And I'd love to get your input on the draft letter, but the update that that underlies the letter is that of the Small Business Grant Program. This is very similar to the grant program that was rolled out previously with the CARES funding. This one would be subject to ARPA funding and would be set up very similar to that of the first grant program. The letter that is cut and pasted in the manager's report is one, is a draft letter that would be addressed to the Coconino County Board of Supervisors requesting the county's participation in this program, along with that of NAU. Again, this partnership would resemble what occurred some time ago at the, in the earlier part of COVID, with a very successful grant program. We may have folks from Economic Vitality to give you details on this, but I think the letter is fairly self-explanatory in the narrative in my report, same comment. So this might be a good time for me to stop and ask if you're in favor of this letter going out. It would go out to the Board of Supervisors prior to their January 11th meeting. It's just a request letter. You can stay tuned for other details on this should the partnership come together and this great program get launched. You certainly will be apprised of that. Thoughts, comments on the draft letter?
Thank you, City Manager. Counsel, any comments, questions regarding the letter? Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you, Mayor. I am supportive of the letter and I appreciate the time put into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to commend staff for putting this on the agenda. This letter is actually a product of the a meeting with with city staff, council, county staff, and NAU. And as a brainstorming on how we can improve the the grant, the grant application process as we move forward in distributing the 360,000 ARPA funding that the city received. And that meeting was attended by the Vice Mayor, Council and Councilmember Sweet and myself. So I just want to show my appreciation to staff, our staff and county staff and NAU who have been actively participating in developing this grant process. And with that, I fully support submitting this letter to the County Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas. Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you. I read the letter ahead of time and I do support it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Daggett?
Thank you, Mayor. I too support the letter and appreciate staff drafting it.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Counsel, for your support on this letter. Yeah. Councilmember Salas, I don't know if you met me at that meeting or not, but I have been at those meetings. And they've been good meetings, and I'm glad that we were able to bring together the city and the county and NAU leadership for those conversations. And yeah, I fully support this letter moving forward. Thank you, Counsel and Leadership and City Manager.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney. I'm also in support and appreciate the efforts associated with this and also excited about the outcomes that they can provide. So with that, we have consensus. City Manager, do you have other parts of the report you would like to highlight?
Yeah, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counsel, for that thoughtful discussion. We will proceed. Stay tuned on that one. As I mentioned, appended to the report are three monthly reports. The first one's from Economic Vitality. It's a great report, a nice read that covers many topics. Updates from the airport, park flag, the beautification, arts and science with some nice lovely photos of the recent utility box wraps and other things. I can go on about this, but I think I will rather see if there's anybody from Economic Vitality who would like to speak at a high level as to the contents of this report. Otherwise, we can hear from Counsel to see if you have any questions. Is there anybody from Economic Vitality with us?
Greg, this is Trace. I am standing in for Heidi, but I don't have the knowledge to speak to at this point in time. Thank you.
I thank you, Trace. Yeah, we have the monthly report in front of us. It's just a great update on a number of fronts. I want to thank you, Trace, and others for putting together the report, and maybe I'll stop here and ask Counsel if they have any questions about this. Otherwise, we'll move on to the other monthly reports.
Thank you, City Manager, and thank you, Trace. Any questions on the Economic Vitality report? I'm not seeing any in this time, so please proceed.
Thank you. Also appended to the manager's report is the monthly report. This, like the other ones, is from the month of November. We're always about a month lag time on getting these to you. Takes time to prepare the report, so we're looking back a bit when we do these reports, but the next one from Water Services comes to you courtesy of Lisa Deem and the crews out at Water Services. It's a great read. I will ask, maybe Lisa is with us in the meeting, not sure, but Lisa, are you with us?
I am here and I'm ready to answer any questions if you have it, if the council has any.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any, anything on the chat box, so thank you much, and we can proceed.
Yeah, thank you, Lisa, for your efforts on that. I will note I attended virtually a little bit of a holiday get-together with Water Services prior to the holiday break, and it was wonderful. It was great to hear and see everybody virtually and have a little bit of lightheartedness, so that was well appreciated. The final report, Counsel, appended to the manager's report is, comes to you courtesy of the Sustainability Team. And again, I'm going to just shoot from the hip here and see if we have anybody from Sustainability who would like to speak to this report.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. Nicole Antonopoulos, Sustainability Director. I hope all are doing well, and I'll just point out a couple of fun hot topics that we submitted in our report, and really, the first two are just a great example of the collaboration and work we're doing with our community partners. We co-hosted with APS an electric car guest drive event on November 6th, and I'm pleased to say that we had over 170 attendees at the event. And the idea behind this was to just introduce electric vehicles to our community members so they could test drive them around the community, and it was well-received and done, obviously, with safety precautions in mind. So we worked very closely with APS to ensure that we were adhering to good practices regarding COVID. We also helped launch the Innovate Waste and Carbon Newtality Challenge on November 12th with Economic Vitality and Moonshot. Councilmember Salas was in attendance that evening, and we're really excited. We've had actually six applications for the carbon dioxide removal category in this challenge, and really looking forward to the award announcement that's going to be coming this spring at our Earth Day event. And just a few other things. For the third year in a row, the City of Flagstaff has received recognition as an A-list city from the CDP, which is formerly known as the Carbon Disclosure Project, which is an international nonprofit agency that monitors and tracks carbon emission reporting and efforts to strong climate action around the globe. And so we are pleased to announce that for a third year in a row, the City of Flagstaff has been recognized. We are one of 95 cities from around the globe that has been recognized in our work. And that would not be happening without the support of the council. And then finally, I did want to announce, and you will actually be meeting Jenna Ortega at the January 4th meeting during public participation, but she has joined our team as our Climate Engagement Coordinator and has jumped right in. I'm really excited to share with the council on January 11th some of the work that she's been doing when we provide you our quarterly update on the carbon neutrality plan. So with that, I will answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Nicole. I'm not seeing anything in the chat box right now. I will mention that the APS event for the electric vehicles was really cool. It was a real community event. It was, it was based on people with electric vehicles in our community, allowing other community members to to drive their vehicles. So it is, it was a really, really community-based sharing what, what the electric vehicle means to them and test-driving other members to vehicles to see if it might be, you know, doable or how much they enjoy themselves. And I'll say that those I spoke to afterward were super excited and that they had that opportunity. So I appreciate our Sustainability Division and our partner with, partnership with APS for being able to put that on and looking forward to yeah, future, future events in the coming new year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, and thank you all for the monthly updates. I will conclude my report by noting that in the next manager's report, or at least one that will occur toward the end of this month, we will acknowledge the December and January work anniversaries. Also, we'll be recognizing a couple of retirements, and we'll do so with Counsel and bring you up to date on, on those and many other matters. In the meantime, I want to wish you and the entire community a Happy New Year. Be safe and be warm. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager and team. That brings us down to agenda item five, which is our consent items. I move to approve all of five A, five B, and five C unless otherwise noted by councilmembers to pull an item out.
I'll second that.
I have seconded by Vice Mayor Daggett. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries unanimously. We're down to agenda item six A of our routine items. This is the consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2021-23. In ordinance of the city council, the City of Flagstaff amending the Flagstaff City Code Title III Business Regulations, Chapter 3 through 10, 310, user fees to establish airport parking fees and amending Title VIII Public Ways and Property, Chapter 8-06 Airport Rules and Regulations, Section 001-8-06-001-0006.3 to provide for enforcement of airport parking and exemptions from parking fees, providing for penalties, repeal of conflict, conflicting ordinances, severability, and establishing an effective date. Staff recommended day, action is to read ordinance number 2021-23 by title only for the final time.
Mayor, may I make a motion?
Please do.
I move to read ordinance 2021-23 by title only for the final time.
I'll second.
The motion by Councilmember McCarthy, seconded by Councilmember Sweet. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously.
An ordinance of the city council of the City of Flagstaff amending the Flagstaff City Code Title III Business Regulations, Chapter 3-10 User Fees to establish airport parking fees and amending Title VIII Public Ways and Property, Chapter 8-06 Airport Rules and Regulations, to provide for enforcement of airport parking and exemption from parking fees, providing for penalties, repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, and providing for clerical corrections and establishing an effective date.
I move to adopt 2021-23.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember McCarthy, seconded by Councilmember Sweet. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. We're down to our regular agenda, agenda item seven B. This is the consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 2021-61, a resolution adopting the City Council 2022 Commemorative Flag Designations. Staff recommend action is to read Resolution Number 2021-61 by title only. Ms. Salzberg?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. Stacy Salzberg, City Clerk. Every year, the council is called upon to set their schedule for the commemorative flag displays using the temporary pole in front of City Hall. So before you is a recommendation for the 2022 commemorative flag schedule. You'll see on the screen what has been proposed. We did get two requests for additions to our calendar this year. The first is really not a change to the calendar, but a change to the flag. This is for June for the LGBTQIA+ month. The flag that was recommended was just more inclusive and more standard with that designation. And the second addition was in August for the Purple Heart Day, and the flag there would be displayed August 1st through 15th. Other than that, there were no other recommendations, but to keep the, the calendar schedule as has been provided in the past. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, City Clerk. Counsel, any questions or comments? And I, I will just mention for councilmembers as well as the public that the change to the June pride flag is now the progress pride flag, which does become more inclusive, more colors, and is in alignment with how that movement is progressing, and I'm hopeful that everyone can onboard with the new flag that is really a more inclusive form of the cause that has been developed in recent years. So. With that, open it up to comments or questions, or happy to entertain a motion.
Mayor, this is Jim McCarthy. I have a quick comment. I do note that the flag we just talked about, LGBT is kind of overlap with the transgender flag. So in effect, we're celebrating that twice. Not that I'm opposed to it, but I just thought I'd point that out.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Well, we, you know, we have the LGBT also includes transgender, so naturally, all along, it was inclusive of that particular movement and group of individuals. So this was, this is actually an addition that further clarifies that, that message. So. If there's no further discussion, I am happy to move to approve the commemorative flag schedule. While I'm up here, approving, or I moved to read Resolution Number 2021-61 by title only, to be specific.
I'll second that, Mayor.
I have that seconded by Councilmember Shimoney. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. City Clerk?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff pursuant to the City Council policy on the display of flags, designating all commemorative flags that will be displayed throughout the year 2022 on the temporary pole in front of City Hall.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2021-61. Do I have a second?
I'll second that. Yep.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. With that, our regular, our special meeting is adjourned, and we will call to order our work session. Again, a notice to the public that the city council may vote to go into executive session regarding any of the agendized items. Do we have anyone for public participation? Yes, I, thank you, Ms. Salzberg. I see that there, we have one public comment.
Yes, we have Don Rodriguez that would like to comment.
Thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Counsel, thank you for allowing me to speak to you today. Eighty thousand people live in Flagstaff. Eight hundred registered volunteers helped with the flooding this summer. A few helped on their own and many people donated. These 1% of people have strengthened our resolve to keep doing our volunteer work. These 1% are proof that there is still hope. These 1% are the blessings we will take from the floods. We abandoned our home in November and hadn't been back to stay until last week. The memories from the floods, the summer flooding, came back. We have seen the city preparing for the work at Dortha. We have no idea what they're planning, but they're working hard and we're working with them on the easements, and we are grateful. We walked the alley from Arroyo Seco to Linda Vista and further confirmed our conclusions about the whole situation. We wonder if people's attitudes are on a bowel curve. If there are 1% of amazing people, are there also 1% of not-so-amazing people? I'll share one example to explain. One morning, workers were assessing the neighborhood. Two kind men were taking 10 minutes of information from us. One man left for the neighbor's house. I asked him if he spoke to the neighbor because he came back right away. He said a woman answered and refused help. I told him that could not be true because she had been in and out of the hospital all week and was exhausted. We all were. We donated the sandbags around our home to her, and she still needed more. He said I would be surprised to know how many people refused help. I saw the neighbor later that day, and I asked her why she would refuse help. She said she didn't. We thought, was he racist, incompetent, or lazy? I realize now it doesn't matter what he was thinking because the point is he messed up and we should have reported it, but to whom? I don't know. How many people are not reporting these types of incidents and are just getting angry? The world is on fire, and the floods of discontent are coming. Our family made these gifts for everybody on the council. They are leather keychains with the peaks beveled on them. Mountains symbolize strength and courage. I hope they help you to remember that you need to be strong and courageous. 1% of people are for moving forward, 1% are traitors to humanity, and 98%, I don't know. That's why we've dedicated ourselves to volunteer work. Even when we are forced out of our home, we don't want Flagstaff to fail. You should hear more experiences like the ones I shared. It would help to move forward if there was a way to confront these employees and make sure they understand their actions have consequences. The malicious lawsuit will not allow us to use for, move forward just yet, so in doing additional research, I found statements that kick people when they are down. Until those parties stop printing statements trying to justify their mistakes, residents will never feel like partners. I do have one request. Alan from Natural Designs is a partner of the city and gives magnificent tours on the burn area. Is there any way the city could help him to record that tour and put it on YouTube? It helped our family to understand the extent of the fire damage and the difficulty of the situation and could help others as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Really appreciate it. And that, just to confirm, that was the only public participant at this time?
Mayor, that's the only one I had.
Okay. Thank you, City Clerk. With that, we are down to agenda item number three, our flood project updates.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. I'm Andy Burdison. I'm the Water Services Director for the City of Flagstaff, and Sam Beckett is bringing our presentation to life up here on the big screen, and Sam will be pulling double duty today. He's also our Streets Director, and we anticipate Sam having a busy night for the City of Flagstaff, so. Thank you, Sam. Looks like we're getting it up on the screen. So I'll go ahead and start. The last update was November 23rd, and the flood mitigation updates, that's specific to the museum fire burn scar flooding, essentially the Spruce Avenue wash. We've made some significant progress since that time, and I'd like to thank Don, the Speaker, for noting that specifically. and I'd like to thank Don, the Speaker, for noting that specifically on Dorathea. And this council approved us moving forward with property easement acquisition. And just anytime there are utilities in those drainage corridors, it becomes very difficult. And so, working within that Spruce Avenue wash through the community, all of those difficulties we're facing. And we refer to them internally as, if there are going to be hurdles in front of us, we need to learn how to run them. And so, that's what we're working hard to do. In terms of, while Stacy, have we brought in a resident expert, Stacy Salzberg, to help us get our technical difficulties worked out as well? We also have with us some of our partners, and that's Christopher Tressler, our Flood Control District and County Engineer, and Lucinda Andreani, our Deputy County Manager for Coconino County. And Don had also mentioned Alan Hayden, who works with Natural Channel Design. And we're very lucky to have Alan as a resident expert in our community on geomorphology, hydrology, and all the things that he studies and does. He has this experience with on-forest measures. And so, our team here from Coconino County is going to talk about that a bit as well. And that's really probably the biggest progress we've made. Also, Scott Overton will be bringing forward to you the City Council next week on January fourth. So hap- Happy New Year. And the Killip Detention Basin in partnership with the Flagstaff Unified School District. And so, Scott has made it, and now Sam, his personal mission, to navigate that, that project. And we're very lucky to have him and his partnership with Bob Kuhn at the Unified School District, as well as Greg Clifton, our City Manager, and Mike Pence, our Superintendent, to really make that a priority as well. So, at the risk of stealing everyone's thunder in the presentation, I just wanted to note those things as we work to get our presentation. So, here we are.
Perfect.
So, thank you, Council. And Sam? So the first slide, we already covered some background. And really, you don't need the background. It's what we gave on November twenty-third. But the flood events, mitigation update, then the budget as well. And I know City Manager Clifton, Rick Tatter, and our Budget Team is working on this element as well, which is in and of itself very complicated and difficult moving forward. Communications, and I think Sarah Langley's on the line. If she's not, we'll cover the communications slide for her. She's been filling in on that communications role, and we're so lucky to have her in that role. She's so, as you all know, she's so professional and just such a hard, hard worker and good contributing member of the team. And then a discussion. So, as you know, we had our first real monsoon season since the museum fire back in twenty nineteen. Those real monsoons kind of truthed out the models, if we will. This is something that we had been modeling since twenty nineteen after the fire. And like I told the story many times, once the fire was contained in twenty nineteen, before it was contained, Lucinda Andreani was on the line saying, "All hands on deck. We need to start preparing for post-fire flooding." And that's something that we have been doing. So as a result, Don and all of our community members face a very real repetitive floods threat downstream. Also, outside of the Spruce Avenue wash and the museum fire burn scar, we had a rare two-hundred-year flood on the south side of Mount Eldon. And during that flooding event and people that were in that area, the reports were, it was like nothing that they had seen before in terms of rain. So it also, very extreme rain. And in that extreme rain, it incised those mountain slope channels. And when we say incised, essentially cut those channels deeper than what they already are. So the flood risk has increased. So, and Gary Miller is going to talk about that particular segment further in the presentation. You'll see some of the photos here. We have the photo on the bottom left, an area off of the end of Appalachia, which is outside the museum fire burn scar in that south side of Mount Eldon event. Then we also have the top photo, which is Sunnyside. And that's something that we've experienced quite often historically, just in my time with the City of Flagstaff since twenty sixteen. We've gotten flooding in those areas several times. And then the damage fanning wash near Bush Master. So impacts are community-wide. This map is a bit hard to read, but the green stars indicate public damage for, we didn't include that private damage, although we know we've had private damage just to protect those that have been impacted. But you'll note, majority of those stars are in, the majority of those stars are in kind of the Spruce Avenue wash, but many are outside. And this is that east, this is that Mount Eldon watershed venturing down into these areas. And then you'll notice in our southwest part of town, the Sinclair Wash area, had quite a bit of public infrastructure damages there as well. And then up here in the Rio de Flag, while the damage, the Rio de Flag was at full capacity, I don't remember the date, I believe it was in August during that flood event. But anything more in that watershed would have been devastating to our downtown community and this building that we're, that we're here in this evening. So I'm going to turn it over now to Scott Overton, and he will talk about the feasibility analysis taking place.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Andy. Again, good update of a lot of good progress. And I know a lot of you have been tracking a lot of these projects. We do have with us as well this evening Julie Leed from Peak Engineering. And Julie's team is the team that has been contracted to work on this feasibility analysis piece. And if she has some time and you have questions, it'll be a good opportunity for you to ask those directly of Julie and her expertise in this field. But I wanted to give you an update generally on the analysis and the work that's been done. It's been fairly new. We did go through the approval process, and we did mention it at the last update. But a lot of work has been completed to date. They're on track to continue this effort into the spring. You've probably heard us reference this feasibility piece more often than not because a lot of this work is to help us determine which project, moving from short-term to mid- and longer-term mitigation, is the most important and can be the most meaningful. And we're hopeful that a lot of this work in condition, in conjunction with the modeling work, really inform us to put our best foot forward and to put dollars best where they belong. Julie's team is working on that at this point. We've started to really get some results back in terms of draft form and kind of the calculations of the existing system and the infrastructure. So that's now at least being peer reviewed within our organization. That's been good forward progress. It was a good benchmark for us to hit before the new year. Not only will that team continue the effort of analyzing our existing infrastructure, but they've also been tasked with more difficult work, which is to take results of the engineering summit and of the Flood Control District, county and city efforts and ideas, and try to formulate those into new alternatives that may or may not be feasible in the coming years. It is very important to know that we meet weekly. It's a robust team of engineers and non-engineers from all agencies. That technical advisory group has been solid in terms of vetting ideas and project work, and I think has been instrumental in probably the biggest benefit, sharing information. So one team can share information with another team. Even if there are competitive engineering teams, they've all been tasked with a segment within the wash. And it's proved up to be a really good model that works well for all of them as well. There's no sense in us doing math twice, unless we're checking it, of course, and it's my math. But the sharing of information is really important, and it's been pretty meaningful. And it's impressive when you can sit on that call, and one team will ask the entire group for some information, and it can get shared within minutes of that request. And it just moves it along so much more quickly. There has also been a request, in particular from our team, to ask them to really analyze areas and move quickly in tandem with projects that we know we will be delivering. And that is a difficult task because many of the projects we are looking to deliver, our partners within the community and FUSD happen to be in the middle of the infrastructure improvement. So not at the very south end where we would like to start. So they're focusing some of those efforts to help us make sure that what we are doing is meaningful and the best work possible. In addition, this drainage master plan effort, if you recall, we are also trying to analyze the entire watershed and other watersheds nearby. But basically, this really speaks to the piece that J.E. Fuller and Joe Lovrich is working on. They're the ones that are doing the hydrology modeling. They're the ones that did the original short-term mitigation work with us in the Flood Control District. We're now moving that to its next step where it's much more detailed analytics, and it's much more based in what happened and occurred over the last summer. They have reported, they've completed all their aerial and LiDAR surveys. They are on schedule and looking good for their delivery in January, which was anticipated. So a lot of that work will flow right into the feasibility analysis. And again, their team is on schedule, and we're really excited about this coming down as new data. I think now I'm going to turn it over to Lucinda, correct? For the updates on some of the Forest Service work and the County Flood Control District pieces.
Thanks, Scott. Good afternoon, Council. It's great to be here. Happy holidays. Just want to provide you with an update on kind of the two elements that the Flood Control District is taking the lead on, and which are really entirely focused on reducing the level of sediment that's coming into the city. If we don't reduce the level of sediment, any, the existing infrastructure as well as any new infrastructure that would be constructed as you're, you're looking at for Dorathea, the park, the, you know, the basins at, at Killip, you know, they're just going to fill up with sediment and not be productive. So this work is really critical. And as you heard, Natural Channel Designs, they're, they're kind of, they're doing the engineering work for kind of both pieces. We have a piece that's going on the U.S. Forest Service land, and I'll talk about that, as well as a piece that's going on private land, as well as a city parcel just above Linda Vista. I'll talk about both those elements. Both, again, focused on reducing sediment, either reducing the production of sediment, i.e. erosion, or capturing sediment. And Natural Channel Designs has completed a preliminary sediment study and identified that probably through the various measures that we, that we can reduce down the sediment load, probably about sixty-five to seventy-five percent of the sediment that's, that's entering the city, which is significant. That will have a significant, important benefit to flood mitigation within the city. So in terms of those two elements, I'll start with on-forest. I think everyone's aware that, that we were really pleased that we received approval from the Forest Service Chief to receive up to three-point-five million dollars. We are working now with the Regional Contracts Manager at Albuquerque on an agreement between the district, the Flood Control District and the Forest Service to facilitate getting that work done and, and receiving those funds. As we can complete that work, we're likely going to be using what's called a good neighbor authority type of agreement. And the goal is to have that agreement completed and approved by the end of this, end of January. And another important element is the National Environmental Policy Act process. So the Forest Service will have to go through and complete what's called the NIPA process, National Environmental Policy Act process, looking at what kind of potential impacts could there be from these, from the projects on forest. And they've put a lot of resources toward this. We're working with, very closely with Matt McGrath at the District Ranger, who's been just incredibly supportive. And, but that takes time. There are very strict time requirements for public engagement, public involvement, stakeholder involvement. And they expect to complete that by mid-May. Now, we're not expecting, we, we didn't have any appeals or any issues that came through when we did the same process with Schultz, you know, prior, working both with the tribes, the environmental community, recreationists that use the area. But obviously, we're going to be working with them to, to identify if there are any concerns and try to mitigate those concerns. But with, with not completing that NIPA until mid-May, that's going to be a really short construction period to get it done before, for monsoon. So we're already in communication with the, with the contractor that's going to conduct that work and trying to figure out a way to stage that work. Hopefully, you know, it's kind of one of these, these issues of, we want a lot of moisture because we don't want to go into fire restrictions and an influence construction, but that's always in the back of our minds as well. So we're really looking at how do we stage these projects to make sure that we can get them done. And there's numerous places on forest that are going to be where we're, we're, the fan areas that we've talked about, where we spread out water so it could slow down, drop out the sediment, several large fan areas, and then several areas, oh, thank you, several areas where we're doing erosion control, you know, grade control to reduce down the production of, of sediment. So that's, that process, again, it's going to be very tight construction. You know, we'll be doing regular updates to the community as we go through that process. You know, we've done some preliminary engineering, as you see here. And this, this is one of the very large fans north of Paradise that, again, is really fundamental to capturing the sediment before it goes into the city. So I feel pretty positive about this. I think, and obviously, the biggest outlier is going to be weather. Do we get into fire restrictions, those kinds of things? But they are pushing very hard on their side. We're pushing very hard on our side. So I, I feel reasonably confident that we can get this work done by monsoon season. The other element is, of course, the NRCS Emergency Watershed Protection Funding that we received. Again, about three hundred, three and a half million dollars. Thank you, Gary. And within that, I'll say that NRCS project, there's three areas that we're going to be involved with. One area is, there's a forty-acre parcel just north of Mount Eldon Estates, which is a rural residential community, as you know, that's been impacted significantly by the flooding. That forty acres is not developed currently. We've been working very closely with the property owner there. And to date, she's expressed, you know, a fair amount of concern and, and willingness to work with us. So we're continuing to work with she and her, her team of representatives to work with her on being able to access that property and construct a fairly large fan there. Very, it's a large, flat area where we know we can store a significant amount of sediment. So, and it's starting to road now, so it's contributing actually to sediment in addition to not performing like an alluvial fan. So that's really, really critical, securing that access to that project, to that piece of the project. The second area is within Mount Eldon Estates itself, and we will, again, be conducting project, project work within that area to reduce down the erosion that's taking place there. As well as in some areas, what's happening is the, where the tributaries cross, the two tributaries come together in that area, and as they cross the roadways, they're eroding the roadways and, again, creating more sediment and, and then reducing down access for emergency vehicles and so forth. So we're doing some work there as well. And we've had tremendous cooperation from the community there. The third and most challenging piece is actually a city parcel that's just north of Linda Vista. And I think it says on here, it, it, it shows this diagram, and this is very conceptual diagram. And I think somewhere else it said it was three-point-six acres, but I think it was closer to six acres, I think. Thought it was a little bit larger. It's a set of very, a smaller sediment basins. Again, kind of a last catch of the sediment before it comes into the city. And, and, and it is challenging for a number of reasons, and we're continuing to evaluate, you know, this opportunity. But it is, it is an important piece of the overall set of pieces in terms of capturing the sediment. But it's very challenging. So this can be very challenging and for several reasons. First, the historic Beale Wagon Road runs pretty much right through the middle of this. If anybody is aware of the old alignment, and the NRCS archaeologist has identified this. It is not on the historic register, but it's eligible, so therefore... this, it is not on the historic register, but it's eligible, so therefore it has to be treated as if it was. And so he's working with the State Historical Preservation Officer, the SHPO, to begin that process. Now, this is really critical, and we've had just a lot of discussion with NRCS over the last three weeks, once this became apparent, about what our options were going forward. And we kind of played out with them, what were the various options? Could we actually pull this element from the project to be able to continue with the rest of the work? Because we cannot start construction until we have all the clearances on this site. So we were concerned about that. We thought, well, if we could break the pieces apart and have, basically have it be two separate projects, the 40 acres and the Mount Eldon, and then have the city parcel, then at least we could get the work done up above. But obviously, every bit we can get done before monsoon, the better, right? So unfortunately, NRCS came back and said, because of the timeframe that it extended beyond since the last flood event, that we could not, we thought, maybe, gee, could we restart that piece and manage the risk that way? Or is this a risk management issue, right? And they said, no, we cannot do that. We cannot break it all apart because we'd already exceeded the timeframe. So we're forging ahead, and there's some risks to that. The SHPO has indicated that they will support us. We're going to be meeting with them next week is the plan, and the goal is to have the MOA, the Memorandum of Understanding or Agreement, completed and back to the district and to the city, because the city owns the property. We'll also have to be a signature and have approval of this MOA as well. And we hope to have that back by mid-March, mid to late March is the goal. So, but it will still create, you know, a lot of challenges. Some other challenges that we have on this site is that we may need some additional easement and/or property. The city owns the parcel, from what we understand, outright. And then there's also a drainage easement that's adjacent to the parcel. And frankly, we're going to have to work very closely with the city attorney on looking at that and what does that all mean if, in fact, we do need, as they work through engineering and we identify, how much land do we really need to accomplish what needs to be accomplished? So we'll have to work very closely on these acquisitions. I think another piece to this is that the NRCS funding cannot be used for acquisitions. So, and historically, the district, the Flood Control District's never paid for an easement. We didn't pay for any easements out in the Schultz area. We just finished a flood control project you may be aware of down in Mountain Dell. We didn't pay for one easement there. We, the district's always had the philosophy, whatever dollars we can get to effectuate flood control, we wanted to go into the project to maximize the project and the benefit versus paying for the easement. So city has a different philosophy with that because, frankly, you acquire a lot more land than we've ever had to. It's a really different, you know, dynamic within the city. So these are the kinds of things we're going to have to work through as we work through this process. And we will need the cooperation of the landowners, certainly both with the 40 acres, Mount Eldon Estates, as well as here, will need their cooperation if we're to move ahead. Next, we'll need an IGA between the city and the district, because the plan is that we're, the district's going to engineer and construct the project and then, in effect, turn it over to the city to maintain. And then, you know, the kind of last challenge that comes into this, which is typical of any project, is you've got to get the engineering done, you've got to get the construction done. I think the likelihood of getting this element of the NRCS project done before the monsoon is pretty unlikely. I'm, I've been really direct with people and honest about what the prospects are. I think this one element will be difficult. Hopefully, we can get the MOA approved in March, and we can start constructing on the other elements right away and then start, you know, move through if we have enough time. Just, it'll probably be very much influenced by weather, but other factors as well. Do we have the easements and land acquisition issues resolved and all of that? So I think this, this element, this piece, is the most vulnerable piece that we're going to see. But my sense is we'll probably end up having to come back and construct this element in the fall of 2022. I'm hopeful the other two elements we can get done and prior to the monsoon season. So with that, I just want to add that, you know, I just want to reiterate that the district's doing everything possible to try to get as much done as quickly as we can, remembering that even for one of the corridors out in Schultz, it took about two years, I mean, to get to the process, right, to get to the point where we are now. So things are moving very rapidly, and obviously, we're really committed to getting it done. And, you know, what we're looking to, as well as that the city's continuing with the efforts within the city, so that, you know, there is this mutual benefit, right? We're proceeding along with the projects within the city that will then get the benefit of the reduction of the sediment. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions when we, if, I think I'm going to wait for questions, I think, till the end, but happy to answer any questions, so.
Yeah, I have a question. Thank you so much, Lucinda. So are we waiting for the NRCS till March before we're able to assess what easements are needed? Or on the city's end, what can we do to help? I mean, I know there's a lot of people involved in this, but what can we do to help? I know that we expedited some processes for the Dorathea inlet to be able to authorize city manager to approve the easements, approve the land acquisition needed to secure that. Is there anything we, as council, can do to support the expedition of, or create an expedited process on our end for this project?
Right now, I can't, you know, it'll just depend on what, we've got to get additional engineering done. They've done, you know, this conceptual plan, but the reality is, until we get our final approval, right now from NRCS, we're, we've submitted all the documentation, the district has committed to the MAT, they have the funds from the federal, so I'm expecting they're all out this week, but next week, I'm expecting to get the final agreement, and then we can move to the next level of engineering. I think we need to get that next level of engineering done to really identify, do we need more property or not, or more additional easement or not? And then at that point, you know, we will let you know. Don't worry, you know I'm not shy. I'll be back to, you know, beg and cajole if, in fact, we do need counsel to support that effort. You know, we're trying to work within a number of constraints at this site. There's also, you know, a gas line in this area, there's a sewer line in this area. So there are other constraints to the project area, which, in some ways, in terms of the impact to neighboring properties, is a positive, I'll say. We're also planning to do work on the, on Mr. Wolf's property to the east of these basins, and that's part of what's being designed as well. So, but, and they are extremely cooperative. They've been working very closely with us. So I'm not anticipating that there'll be any major issues at this stage, but as we go through the engineering, we'll let you know.
Thank you, Lucinda. Yeah, I know that we're, our, the county staff, city staff are really working to expedite this as much as possible, and I know you'll be communicating with us where we can be of help. I just, I want to help the situation as much as possible. So wherever potential obstacles we may see in the future that may gum up the works, I'd like to, on the city's side, be proactive policy-wise or what's within our, you know, jurisdiction and reach as a council body to ensure those obstacles do not hit at the last minute through this process. So anyways, yeah, I entrust you will let us know for sure about that. I do see that Councilmember McCarthy has a question.
Thank you, Lucinda. Once this gets built, the one that's on the screen right now, its purpose is to collect debris. So like after every significant storm, we'd have to go in and clean it out, is that correct? And haul the debris away?
You know, the level of maintenance will be really determined by the size of the flood events that we sustain. So if we get a set of smaller to moderate events, it won't require that level of repetitive cleanout. However, if we were to get successive large events, then yes, it would, could require a greater amount of, you know, maintenance. So the maintenance is really going to be driven by, you know, the size of the events. And that's one of the important pieces of this, is that in the lower, smaller events, we may not see much, as much sediment coming in here, but this will be really important when we get moderate to larger events, that these basins will be much more, you know, are really going to pay for themselves, I'll say, during those types of events.
They'll earn their keep.
That's right. They will.
And I presume that there's access roads in there to...
There is an access road, correct?
To, so the trucks can get in there and scoop it out? Okay, thank you.
And they'll be designed to be able to support that.
Thank you, Councilmember, and thank you, Lucinda. I think we can proceed from here.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor, for expressing your support. We really appreciate it.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Gary Miller. I've been introduced in the past. I'm the new Water Services Engineering Section Director. As we move downstream from the Linda Vista improvements that Lucinda was just talking about, the next set of improvements that the city's working on inside city limits is the Dorathea inlet and channel. So this would be between Cedar and Dorathea. The purpose of this improvement, again, just like all of the improvements, is to reduce the flood risk. Primarily, this project is focused on Sunnyside by providing additional channel capacity within the Spruce Avenue Wash. The current design has 12-foot bottom, it's going to be concrete lined, and it's going to be delivered by our capital improvement section at the city. One of the big challenges that we're having with this project right now, that we're trying to move through as fast as possible, is property acquisition, which you guys have already given authority for. And then we have some significant utility conflicts through this area as well that have increased the cost of this project significantly. And we are working to complete this project before monsoons this next season. And then I'm going to turn it over to Scott to talk about Killip.
Sorry for all the tag teaming here, but as you can see, just lots of players working on this project. This one has been something of my focus for the last six weeks or so. I will tell you, it's coming to you next week, and it's fairly exciting because we've had a good partnership. We've had a good partnership with FUSD, our school district. As you know, they're building a new elementary school to the east of the former site of the elementary school that did sustain major damage over the summer. In fact, they had moved from the facility into a former middle school because it was just deemed terribly inappropriate to try to spend that level of infrastructure dollars in their budgets to try to repair and rehab the school to make it habitable again. So to their credit, we looked at the parcel, and the engineering teams all identified this as being a site that might be a very good opportunity to use for detention. FUSD has a goal to have some athletic fields for their students at the facility. Kind of the stars aligned, I have to be honest, with the current construction. They had a contractor, Core Construction, on board. They are scheduled to deliver that school project August of '22, so this coming school year. We had asked, and they were receptive to us, taking a look at the use of the field amenities and trying to incorporate them into the larger flood modeling work. This is the effort that I was speaking to that made the engineer's job a little more difficult as it was in the middle of the floodway, but they did a good job trying to figure out and calculate what we can get for a good value at this site and still make it safe for student use during non-flood events. To make a very long story short, we've now come to agreement with FUSD. Next week, you will be considering an IGA and final plans. All of the infrastructure system, the detention basins and a 60-inch culvert system from the basins to our existing system in Fourth Street, excuse me, Third Street, are now designed and ready to be delivered. We've entered into this IGA upon approval of yourselves and FUSD School Board on January 11th to move forward with construction utilizing their contractor-at-risk, Core Construction. We will assign a team member from the City of Flagstaff as an owner's representative, but generally, it will be managed by FUSD and their construction team of Core. It is about a $3 million investment in stormwater infrastructure. Another $1 million total project cost of just over four will come from FUSD. They agreed that some of their field infrastructure and their amenities that were going to go into place could be a good contribution. We're thankful for that, but we agree that the stormwater infrastructure piece has made good sense for us to negotiate and to fund, as they really are a detention need for the city infrastructure. Within that IGA, you'll also find that there's language to the maintenance piece, to some future agreements in the event that we install some athletic amenities that they would like to see. But again, we've also asked them to be more open and willing to at least think about a more scaled-back version of amenities at this time until we have some more certainty of the upstream improvements and some of the activities of the actual watershed. So we're thankful for their hard work and their effort to get it there. I want to thank Kevin Fensel. He worked tirelessly right before the Christmas holiday. We really worked in tandem with FUSD Legal Counsel to get this out before the holidays. That's why it's in your packets, that's why it's completed. But also, thank you to our engineering partners. SWI engineered this as quickly as possible under a fair amount of stress, and of course, I've said it before, but all of our engineering team, the modeling effort, the feasibility effort, and we've asked a lot of this group, but this is a gigantic project that we will have in the ground if all goes well before July of '22, and that was the target. So we are on track for that, and we look forward to coming back to this council next week for that approval. And I will follow up with the FUSD group on January 11th, and we will hopefully be moving this one forward. Gary?
Tag me next. So we're going to move away from the museum fire flood area and focus on the South Mount Eldon area, also known as East Flagstaff. We've called it that over the last few months. The pictures you see here are of the Fanning Wash cleanup effort that we've done. So Fanning Wash basically starts from between the Skyline and Swiss Manor neighborhoods up on the north end and then ends, well, it doesn't end, but what we've been focused on ends at the Fanning and Route 66 intersection. And so that's what these pictures below show, is the culvert that goes under Route 66. That picture in the middle is actually a picture of our new mini-dozer that we purchased over this last monsoon season. It paid for itself after one use. The amount of money we spent on that one piece of equipment is what it costs us to clean out one section of box culvert. So it's been a great investment and utilized quite a bit. So the other portions of this channel also go through Bushmaster Park, along Linda Vista. I don't, I'm not going to touch on any of those, but that's just kind of where that wash extends to or through. So this is the upper side of Fanning Wash. This is between that Skyline and Swiss Manor neighborhood. You can see the improvements that we've done up there just to redefine the channel and clean up the wash in that area, and this is just before it goes under Steve's Boulevard. And then one thing I didn't touch on, there's still improvements that we need to do within Bushmaster Park. There's some line channels in that area that saw a lot of damage over the monsoon season with the flooding, and we're working on getting those repairs done before next monsoon season. This is a concept plan that we have prepared for the Shadow Mountain neighborhood or on the north side of the Shadow Mountain neighborhood. We're still in discussions with the property owner. The property owner is the gas company, what's the name of the gas company? Kinder Morgan, thank you. Kinder Morgan, thank you. And this is basically just a detention basin above the homes to capture some of those initial runoffs that we're seeing that are flooding or having impacts on the homes on the north side of Shadow Mountain area. We've actually reached out to the engineer recently to get additional costs on what the final design would cost and, and start to work on estimates for what that construction would look like, but we don't have those at this time. I believe that concludes my stuff. I'm going to turn it over to Andy.
Okay, funding and mitigation in this bit is a bit more difficult, but as Lucinda, as we had stated and Lucinda reiterated, sediment reduction is a critical prerequisite to the function of an existing infrastructure and future expansion of a system. So as we had noted earlier in the presentation, $3.5 million provided by the Forest Service for on-forest sediment reduction mitigation, and then $3 million, I believe it's a little more than $3 million actually, provided by Natural Resources Conservation Service to the County Flood Control District for sediment mitigation. And with that, there is a County Flood Control District match of, I believe, 25%. There is $3 million needed, city funds necessary for the Killip detention system. And we have applied for many FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency, HM Hazard Mitigation Grants, as well as BRIC grants. Those are highly competitive, and the timeline is about one to two years. And as you all know, and, and hopefully, we've, we've all reiterated, we're working on a very fast timeline. I, we always say that we were, many of us work in days, Lucinda works in hours, and so we're just trying to keep up with, with that pace and, and just charge ahead or forge ahead, I think was her term. The existing stormwater rate structure allows for about $1 million a year for citywide capital improvements, citywide throughout the entire stormwater infrastructure system. And the numbers that we're talking about for just this area far exceed that amount. So we're looking at a rate structure potentially to address those needs, although those are very difficult policy decisions we know that you often face as city council members. The bond election could include some flood projects, but that's, that's a year out, and so we just continue to look at all of our funding options in these mitigation measures. And, and, but we know the partners are at the table. Our federal delegation is certainly at the table. The Flood Control District, I think we can confidently say, has stepped up and really assisted and helped us and take, taken a lead role in many regards managing through all of this. Communication strategy. Sarah, are you with us?
Hi, Andy. I'm online. Can everyone hear me all right? Great, I got a thumbs up from the mayor. Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Sarah Langley, Public Affairs Director. Wrapping up our presentation tonight, I'd like to provide you with an update on communications and public engagement. So in response to the request from Council for Greater Public Involvement on Museum Flood Area Projects, I'd like to ask for Council's feedback tonight on our envisioned communications approach, specifically focusing on city-led museum flood mitigation projects. So the overall approach would be managed by the city, specifically the Public Affairs Office, working in close collaboration with our Public Works Team and the Water Services Division. But then we'd also like to bring in Beta PR, which is a local public engagement firm. As you know, we face some incredibly tight deadlines for these mitigation projects, but fortunately, we do have a cooperative contract with Beta PR, which would allow us to get started very quickly in the new year. It's also important to note that Beta PR currently works with the city on numerous other large infrastructure projects. For example, the Rio de Flag flood mitigation work and Coconino Estates, just to name a few. So they do have a proven track record and are familiar with our community here in Flagstaff. So the communications approach that we're proposing is outlined here on this slide, and some of these communications channels would be done cooperatively with the city and Beta, and others would be just handled internally by city staff. So the first step would be for city staff to work with Beta to develop a stakeholder database, and that would really allow us to ensure that we're reaching all of the relevant actors in our communications going forward. That would include private residences, businesses, community groups, as well as nonprofits and any other factors. And then Beta would also develop a specific project website that would act as an information repository for all the communications outputs that we produce during this process. City staff and Beta would also establish regular project updates to keep our stakeholders informed. These regular updates would take the shape of e-newsletters, which would be disseminated electronically through our stakeholder database and also through social media. And then those newsletters could also be printed and placed on bulletin boards around the impacted neighborhoods, and that could be an opportunity to utilize some volunteers to do that work. And then for larger project updates, we would like to utilize flyers that would be mailed to all of the residences in the area. And this would also be an opportunity for council members or any other interested volunteers to go door-to-door and deliver those flyers if you were so inclined. And then we would also use periodic videos to communicate these larger project updates. In terms of community meetings, we believe that work sessions are really the best way for staff and the council to interact with the community due to open meeting law and the ability for council to direct staff during these work sessions. As you know, we've already established that there will be regular work sessions on flood mitigation measures such as this. But in addition to that, city staff and, and Beta would like to incorporate several communication strategy meetings with different impacted neighborhoods, just as kind of a check-in to be sure that we're communicating through appropriate channels for each of the different neighborhoods. And then lastly, Beta PR and the city would establish a project-specific email address where residents could send questions to, and then we would all work collaboratively to make sure those questions are answered and, and track those responses. To wrap up, just some general notes, translation interpretation would be provided into Spanish for all materials to make sure that we're being as inclusive as possible. And then this kind of goes without stating, as you can see from tonight, but we'd also, of course, maintain close cooperation with the county, looking for areas of collaboration on any public engagement with county subject matter experts and public affairs staff, as well as supervisors when appropriate. And then lastly, just to note, you know, we're looking to bring in Beta PR to help the city ramp up our communication efforts, but city staff would, of course, remain highly involved in all of these communications channels and really drive this effort. So that's an overview of our envisioned communications approach, and we have a draft contract between the city and Beta that will be coming before you during the January 4th meeting for your review. So with that, happy to take any questions or feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. I have a, a couple, yeah, questions. So the emergency management system for alerts, is there a way we can utilize that to inform the public of meetings that are going on about this issue? Or I'm just kind of curious, we're discussing a database. How, how would that database be compiled so that we can reach as many people as possible? And is that part of it?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick note, that would be through email address. So we would let people know, you know, they would sign on, and we could then keep them updated as they've kind of chosen to opt in. I, I don't want to comment on the emergency alerts. I don't know if anyone else on the team would be better suited for that, but I believe we would want to keep those emergency alerts for emergency items. I see Lucinda standing at the podium. I don't know if she has anything to add on.
Yeah, I would just add that using the, the emergency notification system, we need to be really very, very careful about how we use it, because when we use it, we want people to, to know that it's, it's an emergency, right? And they need to respond or, or pay attention and take action. And so I think we have to be pretty conscious about how we use that. I, I can tell you, the, the folks in that world, they, they covet that very carefully because they don't want it to become something that's overused, right? And then people just toss it aside like any text they might get. So, so, but to that end, I also wanted to add that we are evaluating the opportunity to install a siren system within the city limits area. And Wes Deason, our emergency manager, has put together, has worked with both our emergency notification system provider, a company by the name of Rave, and another firm that they work very closely with that has an integrated system with the siren system and will actually enhance potentially some of our field communications as well. So we're pulling, we've pulled that information together. We're looking at a potential funding source for a part of that. It's upwards of about a, probably about $200,000, $175,000, $200,000. So it's not a cheap effort, low-cost effort, but, so we'll see. We're seeing if we can identify a funding source, but, and we should know hopefully after the first of the year, you know, within the next few weeks, whether that funding source will come through or not, and then move forward. And that may come back to the council and to the district board in terms of looking at that as an investment. But I would not recommend, now, know that we already have an email list that's well in excess of 400 names, so, 400 email addresses. So we have a really sound system for communicating into the community already. And so I think we can certainly build on that. I'm very supportive of this plan and building on that, and I think there's more ways, as was noted earlier, using YouTube more and some other vehicles to help people understand what are we doing and why are we doing it? And why does it take the time it takes?
Thank you, Lucinda. I'm, I'm really glad that we're working hard towards a siren system. I think that is going to be extremely important, especially for those who are not on cell phones, social media, emergency alerts. It's going to be extremely important. So I appreciate that, and also just know that if letters of support for grant funding or anything else that could assist in acquiring those sirens or anything else, know that, you know, we're, we're obviously very supportive and can show that however you see as could be an indirect benefit towards that cause.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. And I do see Clifton has a comment. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Specific to Sarah Langley's discussion about public outreach and bringing on some outside help, which we contract with elsewhere throughout the community, Beta PR, I want to add to her comments made at the tail end of that presentation. Staff will continue, assuming we can go this direction, staff will continue to have significant involvement in these presentations and updates. We have to. I mean, we're, we're closest to many of these issues, and we want to reach out to the neighborhoods who are very close to these issues, living with them on a day-to-day basis. The reason to bring in an outside consultant to help us with this is, one, they know the city, this is an area that they are already working in with other stormwater issues in the city, related projects. So it's a very good fit. But the most important thing I'd want to impress upon you is doing this not only helps us up our game on public outreach, which needs to happen, but it enables staff to stay focused on the work, and that's exactly what needs to happen. You've heard from many presenters today covering many disciplines, engineering, funding, stormwater, public works, and the list goes on. And that's just internal to the city, in addition to our friends at the Flood Control District, in addition to stakeholders with FUSD who have been more than responsive on the Killip Detention Basin project. The list goes on and on. Our peak engineering, Julie Lead, and, and many others, many engineers have their, their hands on these, these projects, and more importantly, their, their brain power going into these projects. We need to stay focused on the work, and we're, we're talking about work now this year, but we'll be talking about this next year and the years to follow. It's a long road ahead. We do not want to cut ourselves short on the need to keep the public outreach going and to improve it, hence the, the request, the suggestion to bring in some outside help to help us. But really, I wanted to make the point, this is not a passing of the baton. We will continue at the staff level to be fully engaged as we can in the community outreach aspects of this, but we truly need to stay focused on the work, and there's a lot to that, as you can now understand and appreciate. So we think it makes sense. We think it would be good for us, more importantly, it'd be good for the community and our impacted neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. And I, I wanted to note on the communication strategy that I know that we have gotten requests for changing of times to make these updates more amicable participation of many who work regular business hours. And I, I did speak with the city clerk today about this issue and would like to suggest that we kind of rotate so that the next meeting, we have on the agenda that it states that we will not be discussing this until at least 5:30 PM. So that way, those who are working and so forth, who are among the impacted areas, can be more participatory in these flood updates. So in the future, I think it would be best to be able to have the, these discussions a little, some of these discussions a little later. We are facing issues where also, for example, you know, a, a night nurse can't actually be there if we're starting as late as 6:00 PM or later to be able to get to her work, to her work. We have issues of night janitors who also prefer the 3 o'clock meeting, so I'd like to see a rotating basis where if council need, for example, for the next one, we can take a break for an hour, hour and a half, whatever it may be, to make sure that we're not discussing this before 5:30, and then we will rotate it in terms of a normal part of the agenda, starting at 3 o'clock, versus making sure people know, okay, this month we are not going to be discussing it before 5:30, so that way we provide the opportunity for public input. So I just wanted to mention that regarding our, in regards to our communications, to ensure we're inclusive of those with schedules that are more 8 to 5 versus those who are night shift, serving tables, et cetera, that may be starting work later and unable to participate at this time, at that time. So my apologies, a little long-winded, but want to open this up for particularly regarding communications. Any questions, comments from council members? Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you. I didn't even formally raise my hand.
I saw you looking for the button.
Thank you. We've talked about some specific projects, you know, in the Dortha reason, region, Paradise reason. I've just, wanting, I want to be assured that when we make these improvements, that they don't make it worse in other areas that are between these specific project areas. And I was...
Don't get all up and down.
I find it encouraging that like four people want to answer this, so we'll, we'll give it to Lucinda.
Andy may want to come up as well, but I think there's a very strong commitment both by the district and the city that for each project, there will be an analysis conducted that's called a no adverse impact analysis. And basically, working with J.E. Fuller, you know, they're doing this kind of foundational study right now, right, of hydrology, and that in effect gets turned over to Julie, who will then start looking at feasibility. As the city moves forward with individual pieces of that, that overall project, let's say, they'll be conducting this no adverse impact analysis to make sure that anything that's done doesn't affect both downstream and upstream. And so standards, what we did in Schultz is we actually set a standard that the impacts could only be of a certain fair, very fairly low level, and then that analysis was run usually at about... And then that analysis was run, usually at about the 60% engineering. And then at that point, if it showed that there were impacts, then you have to go back and re-engineer. You cannot create downstream or upstream impacts. And so I think that's the intent, and that is the plan that we've all discussed and agreed to. So, and that's a really important investment, so that people have that assurance. And it also, obviously, it's a risk management for the city and the district as well.
So, and we've talked about certain projects. Are there other projects sort of in the works between these projects too? Or, or, or do these projects that we've talked about kind of cover it all?
Well, the, as, as Julie works, her firm works through and the city works through the feasibility of potential, additional potential projects within the city, I would expect that other projects are going to come forward, right, in that process. So...
Thank you, Lucinda. And councilmember McCarthy, so we talked about some projects that are moving forward pretty rapidly this evening. I always go back to the conversation we had at the Capitol Discussion Budget Retreat with the city council at the end of September. And I didn't include that slide in this presentation, but we gave some thoughts prior to a feasibility analysis taking place on some projects that could continue to take place in that Spruce Avenue Wash. So, for example, we've doubled the size of the culverts at Linda Vista. They would, right now, without the feasibility analysis, a layperson like myself would say, let's yet again double that size. It's, it's a thought that's out there that we continue to discuss in cooperation with this feasibility analysis. Also, the box culvert at Cedar. And so we look at all of those pinch points. And that box culvert, you know, councilmember McCarthy, you go from corrugated metal pipe to boxes, prices go up, but that Cedar Avenue is a main travel corridor in our community, and that culvert underneath is a main corridor for this flood mitigation effort. So, yeah, doubling the size of that, for example. So for me personally, those projects are always on my radar because it's, okay, we do the feasibility analysis, what do we do with it? And we have very robust discussions internally and with our cooperating engineers, and always, okay, analysis, but let's not get paralysis. Let's keep, keep moving forward in that way. And that's what we're working on doing. So if you recall, those projects that we laid out, I think some total was a number that I, that we had put out there was 18 million. And so it's, it's, it's a costly endeavor. And then we have an idea that came forward of, in terms of diverting the water, and that was one option that we had talked about. So you have the Spruce Avenue Wash, and then there's this notion that can you get it around the neighborhood? Something that we talk about that's also very, very costly, but it's always something. And that came from the summit. And so, I'm sorry for the long, well, Lucinda answered your question, I just wanted to add that in there as well.
All right. Well, I appreciate all your good work. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, councilmember McCarthy. I guess on that note, are there grants out right now or being prepped for that stretch on Grandview, for the Linda Vista culvert, as well as the, on Cedar? What stage in that are we to being able to fund that part? Because we've been discussing a lot of what is necessary to begin with, but what are, what are the plans for next steps on funding?
We have some FEMA, oh, sorry, mayor, members of the council. Julie, you want to take that? We have some FEMA grants that are out there. Ed Schenk, our stormwater manager, has actually done a good job. He's taken a couple of days. We locked him in his office, and he cranked out some grants, submitted them through Stacy BK. One thing I will note on that, and it's not that we would want to turn away funding from other sources, but the original Linda Vista culvert upsizing, we were to utilize a grant for that. That money, while we were awarded, just wasn't there. And so we went ahead and forged ahead and did that project because we hadn't received the grant funds yet. We are all looking at the infrastructure bill with hope and, and hoping that there will be, and, and we know that our federal delegation is very much paying attention, and they're involved in our conversations, particularly, we have a great relationship with our members of staff. So Julie.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. I was feeling a little left out, so appreciate the opportunity to get up and speak to you. Councilmember McCarthy, I think this is going to be some more specifics related to your question about what we've been working on. So for the past six weeks, we have been running parallel with J.E. Fuller, who's been doing the dry, hydrology with Coconial County Flood Control District. And the work that we have been focused on and that we have been accelerating is how we can maximize the existing system. Because that is probably the best first approach. The best first approach is to take, you know, we have channel. How deep can we make that channel? How wide can we make that channel and still work within the, the constraints that we have? The, the pipe system through Spruce and Third Street, how much bigger can we make that and fit that in the right of way and still avoid other gravity utilities that are necessary and essential? So that is the work that we've been doing for the past six weeks. And as you know, we have to start on the downstream end and work our way up. And we accelerated this piece because we needed to see how it was going to work with the Killip Detention Basin and the Dorothea inlet. And I, I would say in the, the 20 years that I've been a consultant in Flagstaff, an engineering consultant here, the, I have never had this experience of collaboration to this level. It has been impressive. So we have weekly TAC meetings, where we have consulting engineering firms that, that get together. We have the County Flood Control District, and we have capital improvements, water services, and public works that all come together weekly for these TAC meetings to discuss these things. And so as we're working our way through this feasibility study, we're fitting in these pieces so that you know, when you're making that investment in the Killip Detention Basin, that there, the plan that we're looking at and that we're talking about and pulling together as a team is going to fit in the long term. So taking that piece by piece and working our way up. So that, those are some specifics of the work that we've been doing. It's in peer review right now, that first draft of what we can do in the existing system and, and the footprint, starting at the, at the box outlet, at the Speedway in Blimpy, and working all the way, all the way up to the basins that Natural Channel Design is working on, north of Linda Vista. Yep, thank you.
I just got a notification, we do have a public comment about this item, so I'd be happy to take it to this point. City clerk?
Thank you, mayor. We have Don Rodriguez.
I've been sitting back here listening, and thank you, everyone, for coming and for working on this. You guys saw me last time, my thoughts aren't organized in speaking, so please be patient with me. Just one request. You know, I'm not very smart, and I don't understand what this district is. I hear it over and over, maybe in the correspondence we can have. I think one time I saw on Facebook the supervisors of the district there, maybe their contact information. Are those the only people that are supervising it? I heard the words no adverse impact analysis. Can I see the report for Dorothea? That was done there because I, I had some very extreme concerns about that, how that was done. Also, man, those storms, they had us on our toes. All the residents up and downstream, everywhere, and, and that August 17th, or I don't know which day, but it was, the whole town was flooded. And people were just going nuts, moving sandbags and everything. And, and I, I remember this. I believe it was Lucinda that said, all the time she reminds us, and I'm grateful because I'm slow, and she says, every flood event is different. Every area is different. So everybody's moving sandbags, and even the city and county. And we should, we should be trying to, you know, fix, we don't know if it's coming, where it's coming from, but, and I know it's very important, you cannot have downstream or upstream impacts. But what if, what if in all this chaos, we do? What happens? Because that happened on Dorothea, and I don't want to go into the details, but we're coming up to another year. I mean, who knows, the monsoons, the, what was that word they said? The incisors, and it's worse than it was before. Will somebody listen to us or just brush us off? Or, or, I mean, we've lived there for 18 years, and I think, I think, I mean, we're not engineers, but we did build a road. My, my husband has the only road on any tribal reservation in the United States in a flood zone. So, I mean, can we like, maybe listen to some people, the neighbors? And we get all our information from the neighbors too. So I just have these questions, and maybe somebody can get back to me about that. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. To address your first question about the district, could, could we have somebody to speak to kind of the, the overlaying of administrations and so forth? Because, I mean, I, I, this, this does become extremely confusing with so many stakeholders. I think that's, thank you, Don, I, I think that's an important thing for us to better communicate.
Certainly, and I'm happy. I mean, and we've talked several times, and I'm happy to meet with you and go over it as well, and maybe show you on paper. But, so, in, in the state of Arizona, counties don't have stormwater authority, unlike cities. Cities and towns have the authority to have a stormwater fee or levy a tax, in effect, for stormwater feat, you know, projects and activities and maintenance within their jurisdictions. Counties do not, and, but it, back in 1984, the state legislature established the ability for counties to create what's called a flood control district. And that flood control district has similar but different authorities and responsibilities from, from a city or a town jurisdiction. So at the county, the county doesn't have any, the county itself as a political entity doesn't have any authority or ability to effectuate flood control. Only the flood control district does. The Board of Supervisors that sits as the Board of Supervisors for the county also sits as the Board of Directors for the flood control district. So it is confusing. But it's really a separate entity under the state Arizona, just like the city of Flagstaff is separate from the county, just like the city of Flagstaff is separate from the city of Page. They're all separate jurisdictions. So when, when the board sits as the flood control district, those are the only decisions they can make relative to flood control. So it, it's, it's really a, you know, a legal statutory requirement. But it's important because the flood control district does have the authority to, to tax, to levy a secondary property tax. And that's where the funding comes from. That funds the, funds the district. And, and the funds that we've been using now, well in excess of 5 million toward museum mitigation efforts is what, where that funding is coming from. So, so yeah, it is confusing. You think the county, and it's the same people, but they are the, the same elected officials, but it's a very different, it's a different legal entity. So...
Yeah, thank you, Lucinda, for the explanation. This whole thing, it gets so bureaucratically intertwined and a lot of layers. And, I mean, I, I, I think we all really want to get something accomplished and done and done quickly, and we're making lots of movements, and we're seeing a lot of that, just a lot of, a lot of hurdles that we keep facing and sometimes don't expect. So with that, do we, do we have any other questions, comments regarding this from council? Councilmember Shumani?
Thank you, mayor, and, and thank you all for the presentation today and all of your hard work. I just wanted to express gratitude to all the different partners and agencies involved in this effort. Mayor, I really do appreciate your comments about the start time of future updates and, and just the communication plan that Sarah laid out, and engagement with the public, and, and obviously gratitude to the public who's engaging with us tonight and ongoing. We're working through it. It sounds like we're, we're doing some really good stuff, and there's some good plans in the works, and I just, I just have gratitude for all of you. So, yeah, keep us in mind in terms of what we can do to, to support and continue to support, and, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Shumani. Well, then with that, I'm not seeing any further sees or cues in the chat box or hands raised. I think this would be a good time to take a little break before we go to the next agenda item. So let's take 15 minutes, be here at 5:05 PM, and we will get into the discussion of potential city council code of contact, conduct, and ethics policy. So, thank you. And, well, then, let's get started here. We are down to agenda item four of our work session. This is the discussion of potential city council code of conduct and ethics policy. City attorney?
Thank you, mayor, and thank you, council, staff, and the public. I have my camera on here briefly, but due to some bandwidth issues, it causes it to interrupt my audio. I am going to turn that off, but I apologize for not being with you there in person, but really fighting a nasty cold. So I thought you'd best appreciate it if I didn't spread that around. So I want to get started, first by indicating to you that this is a, an item that I spent a lot of time on. I appreciate the efforts of others as well. I know that multiple council members had requested an item on this through the fair process. Ultimately, I believe it was councilmember Solis's fair that others signed on to, and some of the others dropped off. But before I even get any further into the substance of it, from a procedural perspective, I just want to, as the cliche goes, begin with the end in mind here. This is an item tonight for council discussion only. There is no decision to be made by council here at this point. If a majority of the council gives direction today, and that's four more, staff will take that direction, obviously, and come back with some potential options for the council to consider ultimately making a decision upon. Whatever the outcome, I will state upfront, and I'll probably reiterate it before I get done with this little introduction, any code of conduct or ethics policy adopted by the council should be enforced by the council or a third party, but it should not be staff members that work at the pleasure of the council. That creates a bit of an issue. I've witnessed some other jurisdictions, municipalities, and counties that have something along those lines, and it really becomes problematic. So that's just a note that I'll throw out before going any further. Again, this came through the fair process. The city council requested the opportunity to review several different codes of conduct and ethics policies that are used by other municipalities. I've researched multiple municipalities' codes of conduct or ethics policies across the country. I have limited what is presented to you here today to several other cities and towns around the state of Arizona. Any of you who've looked through them know that these are very recognizable cities and towns in our, our own state, and there's a reason for that. Most of the policies across the country reference state laws in the cities where those states exist. And so for a better fit, I've included only Arizona policies. However, there may be bits and pieces that, in your own review, if you ever came across anything that you saw from another state that didn't speak specifically to or wasn't impacted specifically by state law, by all means, council could consider that too. too. But again, that's why what was included with the item in the agenda packet had examples only from the state of Arizona. Um, you'll also, um, note that, um, the inclusion of these other city policies on my part is not an endorsement or even a recommendation by me specifically or by my office to use that particular policy or that, uh, code of conduct, but rather they're for illustrative purposes only and for you as council to choose from. And of course, portions of those examples can be considered by you as the city council. Um, whether they're a good fit or not for the city of Flagstaff is you, uh, the city councils, um, it's ultimately with you, the city council, to make that determination. Um, again, many of them references, reference state law on ethical issues such as, um, gifts and the fact that elected officials are not supposed to accept gifts and the issues related to conflicts of interest. Um, that doesn't mean necessarily that whatever, uh, ultimately comes before you for a decision has to include that. Um, this, this really is just an opportunity for you to discuss because as I mentioned in the executive summary, there is no one size fits all, uh, code of conduct or ethics policy, and it needs to be tailor-made to what Flagstaff ultimately needs in the council's discretion. So, uh, again, the, the only final piece that I will give before I turn it back to you, Mayor, to open it up for discussion as to what the council might be interested in, uh, with respect to some of these examples or, uh, what you would like to adopt moving forward in the future. Again, just reiterate the fact that whatever is there, when it comes to a code of conduct or an ethics policy, enforcement should be performed by the council or a third party, whether that's a mediator or a third-party commission, uh, some entity essentially that is not, uh, a staff member. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, city attorney. Much, much appreciated. Um, just so the public is aware, the, uh, code of conduct, um, and ethics policies that we are, uh, kind of looking at to consider include Glendale, city of Maricopa, Mesa, Phoenix, Scottsdale and Tucson. Uh, on the agenda for our work session, the, you can see their specific, there's the link to their specific, uh, code of ethics policies, but this was been the, uh, kind of the baseline on our considerations. Um, so just wanted to note that, but aside from that, I'm, uh, happy to open this up for, uh, council discussion or potential questions as, as necessary.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and, um, first, uh, allow me to thank staff for putting this on the calendar. It was, this was a result of my fair item way back in February. And, um, and it came back, uh, mid-year and we did, um, receive, uh, support from three other council members to move this forward to a, uh, work session, which is, uh, happening now. So for the benefit of, of staff and the public listening, uh, allow me to, uh, briefly summarize the different, uh, code of conduct and ethical policy that was, uh, mentioned by the mayor. So for Glendale, Glendale has a, um, uh, a code of conduct for, for elected officials, uh, um, and code of ethics for elected officials and boards and commissions. Um, it specifies, uh, the conduct, uh, by elected officials, uh, within one another, with city staff, with the public, with other public agencies, with board and commissions, and with, uh, council conduct with the media. And then, uh, there's a specific, uh, specified code of ethics for elected officials and boards and commissions that includes, um, of course, complying with law, respect for process, conduct of meetings, uh, conflict of interest, uh, gifts and favors, uh, um, but I think we have that existing policy, which is the gifting policy and, uh, and, um, compliance and enforcement. Um, uh, for Maricopa, uh, Maricopa has similar, um, Maricopa has a similar, uh, um, code of ethics that is, that is, uh, actually articulated in their charter, um, and specifically under, uh, Article Eight Code of Ethics. And, um, it all, it involves, uh, uh, reporting ethical violation and the informal and formal process of, of, um, of, of, uh, accepting complaints and processing complaints, uh, which, um, the formal complaint is processed by the city manager and the city attorney. And then of course, it, it has some, uh, some sanctions, uh, for corrective measures. Um, the city of Mesa has, um, has an ethical policy and it, uh, consults with, uh, the city attorney in terms of interpretation of the policy and, uh, for penalties and, and sanction is primarily to educate and then discipline. Uh, well, the city of Phoenix has a very elaborate handbook called Ethics Handbook. Um, and it actually calls for, uh, for constit- constituting an ethics committee, uh, and specifically identifying who will sit on, on those ethics committee. Uh, and it, um, has a, uh, specific, specific rules about the conduct of the ethics committee. And it has, uh, a very detailed, uh, list of appendices when it comes to applicable laws. Uh, the city of Scottsdale has, um, um, an enforcement and complaint, uh, stipulation, and it has to be filed with the city attorney, which is also, the, the Scottsdale's, the city of Scottsdale policy calls for an independent ethics review committee to be appointed by the city attorney. Preferably, the appointees to the committee have very strong background in jurisprudence, law, uh, and constitution. Um, the city of Tucson has, uh, uh, calls for a third-party, uh, review committee when it comes to, uh, um, uh, ethics-related or conduct-related complaint. And, uh, it will have to go through full council for, for a decision. So, um, I would, I would recommend to, uh, move forward with the, uh, the, the city of Glendale, uh, model in terms of, um, specifying the code of conduct as well as code of ethics. Um, with the process of, uh, um, reporting and, uh, mediating and, or resolving complaints, um, will be processed by an independent review committee. Uh, and the review committee will have to be appointed by the city attorney and the city manager. Um, of course, the first, uh, first and foremost, uh, intent of having a code of ethics and a code of conduct is, you know, we, we hold ourselves, uh, up to higher standards as elected official when it comes to conduct and, um, um, ethical standards. Um, the idea is to have like a, a three-phase, you know, the first phase is, is to, to, uh, have, uh, the, the complaint or the, the, uh, potential concern for, you know, a code of conduct or a code of ethics, uh, violation and to have that, you know, to have, uh, that elected official, uh, correct that behavior or the conduct. And then if it, and then if it doesn't, you know, uh, get corrected, there will be like a process of, 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 um, of censure and investigation, which will be, um, processed by the independent, um, independent ethics review committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Solis. Um, other members of council's thoughts?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Ms. Solis, I appreciate you bringing this forward. Um, you know, I guess I have a concern, this seems like a heavy lift for staff right now. Um, we have a lot on our plate and I'm just wondering if this is maybe something to add now or, um, in the, in the list of things that we have going on, I'm just not sure if I'm ready to say this is something we needed to dive into at this moment. I do, in the long run, think this is something that perhaps we should investigate and be forward on. I just don't know if timing-wise, if this is something I want to put on staff because regardless, it will take a lot of time, I believe. Um, and those are my thoughts right now. I'm interested to see what council has to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. Councilmember Shimon and then Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and yes, thank you, Councilmember Solis. Um, Councilmember Sweet, you, you stole the words out of her mouth. I, I fully agree with what you said and I see so much value in, in what Councilmember Solis is presenting and discussing with us tonight. I do wonder if this is the right time to be pushing forward with this, although I don't know if there's ever really a right time. Um, yeah, I don't know. I don't know. I, I don't know how to move forward with this without it taking a lot of staff time, as you spoke to Councilmember, um, Sweet. Um, I, I guess I'd, I would be curious, um, what our, our city manager Clifton thinks about staff and in terms of capacity right now and, and taking this on. Um, I don't necessarily see a pressing issue for this at the moment, um, but I also think it's important for us to have something like this in place, just like a recession plan and all the other good planning documents that we have. So, um, Mayor, I, I like this. I want to see us move forward with this. I just don't know how to move forward with this, um, without adding too much burden to staff. Maybe the city manager has an idea as to how to face something like this in, oh, for years, um, and get something like this going. But, um, yeah, I, I just, I don't, I don't feel great about pushing forward so hard with this at this moment, but I am curious to hear what my other, uh, the rest of council thinks. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimon, and I'll, I'll get to Councilmember McCarthy, but if, uh, city manager, um, given the questions, if you would like to chime in, you're, um, yeah, more than welcome to before we go to Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. Uh, of course, uh, we're, we're at your pleasure on this one, um, but I want to be quick to note, um, this one, um, would involve a lot of careful formulation and, and review and it wouldn't necessarily all fall on my plate at all. It, I, I think I would be at the table, but I think, uh, this would involve a, a lot of effort by our legal council, legal team, um, and others. Um, I think I will add to that, uh, it probably is a statement of the obvious, uh, this one will require a lot of careful thought, uh, and perhaps some checking back with, with council, uh, as, as was noted at the outset by, um, by our city attorney. Um, it, this is not, you know, there, there's not any one model that, that can be utilized. It has to be specifically tailored to the needs of, of our community. I would echo that comment. Um, in, in my past, I have worked, uh, only with one jurisdiction that had an independent ethics committee. Um, and in the course of several years, I saw two matters advanced to that committee and, and neither of, of, of those two items I, I thought were, were, um, they, they were, they were very divisive and, um, the discussions and the outcomes, um, were not, you know, I would not characterize them as, as being positive. I, I, I guess, of course, that's going to be the case with, with an ethical review, an ethics review, but I just want to point out, and, and the reason I mention that is, is I think, uh, some, that the, the unpleasant experience with that might be attributed to the fact that those committee, that committee may not have been, uh, established with the level of care and scrutiny and a forethought that needs to go in to composition, scope and purpose, the function of the committee, and significantly as important, what the outcomes look like. Um, and, you know, otherwise, without that level of care, you may very well end up with a situation where you have a, a committee, a committee that is appointed overseeing an elected body that is elected. The elected body, of course, has, uh, has accountability to its electorate. The appointed committee not necessarily accountable to anybody. Um, so I, I, I mention these things because great care does need to be exercised. Now, back to the question at hand, would we, uh, be able to pursue this? Yes, but I think going back to earlier discussions this evening, there are significant matters on the table right now that require a lot of, uh, urgency and attention. Um, so we would probably have to, to, you know, maybe reprioritize a few things. Uh, on the other hand, if it was something that could take a little bit of time, I, I think we can all deliver on that. I do not want to speak for our esteemed legal counsel. He can weigh in on this as well. But I, the point I'm trying to make in a very long-winded way is this one will take great care and, and very good a forethought to, to do it right. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, city manager. I do see, uh, city attorney, um, wants to chime in.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and council. I, I appreciate it and city manager Clifton, I really appreciate your comments. Um, of course, if we, uh, receive direction tonight, we're at the council's leisure, uh, pleasure, as, as the city manager has indicated, uh, we'll make time and, and room for this. And it would not involve just, you know, myself, although I would primarily be involved, I would work closely with, with Greg on this and with others. Um, I will say, uh, that the, the words that Greg used are words that I would reemphasize, care, um, and deliberateness and making sure that the thought and effort goes into this. While tonight is just a starting point, um, to say which direction you may want to, to head or not, uh, head, if you will, um, that really, that hard work, um, doesn't begin until we really dig in and, and take that care and precaution and concern in making sure that what is drafted for you to ultimately consider as an option or options is, you know, very carefully crafted, uh, and that, uh, it fits for what is needed here in Flagstaff. Again, uh, the, the context of the question, the call of the question was time. Uh, I'll, I'll make the time necessary if the council wants to, to move in that direction. Of course, there's always a lot going on, but, uh, that's where I'm at from my perspective. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, city attorney. Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple thoughts. I did, I read the Glendale one in great detail and I kind of skip read the other ones. I noticed that they're all very long. The Phoenix one is 58 pages, so if we do this, I would like to see if we could keep it simple. Maybe that's not possible. There's a lot of hard questions to answer before we do this. I mean, would we let the, if there was an allegation of a wrongdoing, would the council itself make the decision to reprimand a member of its own? If so, what would the penalties be? Would it be a slap on the wrist? Could they be kicked off council? Probably not, but anyway, I guess, you know, the, the basic question is what could they do? What, and if we had a committee, you know, who would be that committee? And they might only meet once a year or something, who knows? Hopefully not very often. So, there's a lot of work involved in that regard. As I mentioned before, what would the penalties be? That's not a real easy question to answer, in my opinion. And if it's only a slap on the wrist, what's the point in doing it? And I don't think under the charter, we can kick somebody off council unless they're maybe convicted of a felony or something egregious like that. So, there's a lot of questions. I think I agree with Councilmember Sweet's comments, which Mr. Shimoney reiterated that, you know, maybe this isn't the highest priority for right now. It would be interesting to, you know, set down some rules, like, you know, when Arizona Public Service took me out to lunch one time, I wouldn't let them pay for my lunch because it just didn't feel right. But I'll admit, I've had other people buy my lunch, you know? Well, is that good or bad? You know, maybe we need to get into those deals. Just tonight, a woman in the audience gave us a gift and left it on the podium. Is that acceptable? I think it is. But, you know, maybe we can put a rule, if it's worth $25 or less, then we can do it. That might be a meal, it might be a, a handcrafted, whatever it is. Thank you, incidentally. So, it, it might be good to lay down some of those, you know, what can I do, what can't I do? And so, I, I think I'm supportive of doing it, but it's certainly not real high priority. You know, I'm in my sixth year on council and if the biggest ethical issue I've had to face is can someone buy me lunch, I don't think there's too much concern. You know, the other thing I'll say is that you kind of know what the line is. When I ran for state legislature, someone tried to give me a campaign contribution and they'd already exceeded the amount that they were allowed to give in a given year, so they just started peeling off hundred-dollar bills. And I says, wait a minute. I says, that could be embarrassing for you and it could be embarrassing for me, so I didn't take it. I mean, I didn't have to have any rule to tell me that I couldn't take that money. I knew it. I knew it in my gut. So, so I guess in summary, I would be supportive of doing this, but it's kind of very low priority considering that to do it right, it'll be a lot of work on the, you know, from legal department, from the city manager and from council members. I will, if this gets done, I'll end up spending 40 hours on it. I can see it coming. All right, I'll leave it at that for now.
Thank you, council member. Vice Mayor Dagan?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Solis for bringing this to us and staff for compiling all of the, the policies of the various cities. It was interesting to, to read. I, I believe that we have greater priorities to put our attention toward. I also think that a lot of these elements are covered elsewhere, like in terms of lunches and that, you know, those sorts of issues. And I guess I would like to see us, and future councils, just take some personal responsibility for behavior and, and I just, I really think that I'm not seeing a big need to have this rise to the level of asking staff to work on it right now.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm, I'm not seeing any season cues now in the chat box, so I will weigh in. I, I do believe this is a very important thing for us to keep in mind, to continue further discussions on. I appreciate Councilmember Solis for bringing this forth. I do have several ideas on how we could pursue this based on some of the templates we have seen, but I, and I'm happy to give those. But again, when I, I think with many of the other members of council, when we're facing issues regarding legal cases that could cost us over a million dollars per year to the city, when we're dealing with cases of our water supply, when we're dealing with cases of storm water issues and ensuring that we can move this as quickly as possible to address for our community members and the existential threats we face, this is important, but in categorically, less so than many of the issues that our city attorney's office is working very, very hard, working overtime to help protect our city. So, I, I personally think that this, I, I think that this needs to progress potentially. Maybe we have a discussion about this again in six months if this is, or, or whenever we may decide as a council body. I think this needs to continue as part of the discussion. I think also having that as, you know, a continuing discussion helps to keep a check and keep our own minds in that place of, let's make sure that we are doing what we would want to see in a potential code of ethics policy. I don't want to shut this conversation down today and say, no, it's not, we're not going to do it, but I do recognize that this, compared to so many of the other issues, this, this is less of a priority. But I will mention that I do agree with Councilmember Solis that the Glendale version was actually the one that caught my eye a little more than the others. I have very, I have a lot of little things on that that I would like to improve upon, adapt, but I won't get too much into that, other than saying that I don't think it would be fair to our city manager and city attorney to set up a committee and have that committee tied to staff, kind of as the city attorney had mentioned, to be the forefront of enforcement. I think that's our responsibility as a city council to keep each other in check. So, if we're talking, going to go down the road and continue these conversations, I'll just let you know, I think it's our responsibility as a city council and we shouldn't pawn that off onto a committee formed by the city manager and city attorney. I don't think we should pawn that off onto others, but take that responsibility on ourselves however, however it may come, which is some of the ordinances that were provided with certain steps, like with Glendale, you need to talk with the person first and foremost. If you have a problem with a member of council, talk to them directly. I mean, a, a lot of these things are just very sensical to begin with on just general conflicts that you face in life. So, I won't belabor and continue too much, but those are kind of my initial thoughts on the issue and I will, yeah, pass the mic over to Councilmember Solis for comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would, before I make my comment, I would defer to our city manager who had indicated in the chat box.
Thank you, council member. Yeah, and thank you, Mayor. My suggestion is a little bit in line, I think we're, we're with what the mayor was articulating just now, and that is being respectful of this being a fair item that did garner for the, the, the positive vote of, of four council members and being that what we're hearing tonight is, it's important, but perhaps not the highest priority at the moment. My suggestion is that we keep this in the queue for fair items. We, we have a running list and we do circle back and we can do that over time. We will not let go of it. We know it's important to this body, so we can bring it back. And maybe that's a good approach here, but just a suggestion that came to mind. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Councilmember Solis, I appreciate you forwarding that to city manager, but floor is open for you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate, I appreciate your, your remarks as well as our city manager's suggestion. I, I have submitted this as a fair, fair item way back in February, realizing that we as a council body does not have an existing code of conduct and code of ethics policy. So, and hence I did my research with other communities and, and setting local policy is, is one of our four major responsibilities as council. I do understand that we have so many priorities in terms of, of policies and staff is working on multifaceted priorities when it comes to, to legal advice and legal expertise, but I do hope that, that setting policy when it comes to a code of conduct and a code of ethics, you know, will, will garner its, its own merit as, as, you know, still have a policy in place and a process in place when it comes to, you know, conduct and, and ethical standards, then we will have, you know, something to, to turn to, you know, when the need arise. So, it's just being proactive and having, having a policy in place will serve not only the current council, but future councils, you know, in years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Solis, and I do agree and I really do appreciate you bringing this forth and it is an extremely important document that helps to really solidify the things we would like to see in our elected leaders in, in general, and I, I do appreciate that. I do see city attorney wanting to chime in here.
Thank you, and, and thanks to everyone who has commented. I, I did want to follow up with, I, I had some similar thoughts when I started to hear some of the council members' concerns over time and priorities and such. Keeping this in the hopper, if you will, when it comes to future agenda item requests is always a possibility. Council has not, said tonight, not one of you has said you want this item to go away. In fact, it's just the opposite. You've all said you're interested in it. It's just a matter of timing. With that, I, I completely agree with the, the idea to keep it in the, the list of, of fair items to come back, not just generally to come back, but also to come back as needed, if earlier, if necessary. That's always a possibility too. Any of the council members could indicate that, hey, I feel there's a need to bring this back and if it came back, to get the support of other council members moving forward with that discussion, that could happen at any time. So, I just wanted to make sure procedurally you were all aware of that.
Thank you, city attorney. I, I appreciate the clarification. I'm not seeing any more season cues in the box and just want to check with staff if this has been enough direction or if you need anything further. It seems to me that we need to keep this in the hopper and if it becomes salient in the near future, then council member, a, a member of council can request it to be placed again, then again on the agenda. Otherwise, we'll be picking it up at a later time, hopefully when you have less on your plate, city attorney and our attorneys with so much that you all are facing. Is there, is there any further direction needed on, on this particular agenda item?
Mayor, council, I do not believe there's any further direction needed. I think it's been very clear tonight, you're all interested, just not at the moment, and if that need arises sometime between now and, and when it does come back on its own, we'll, we'll talk process at that point and get it back in front of you for further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, city attorney. Much appreciated. With that, we are moving on to the agenda, agenda item number five, which is the review of draft agenda for the January 4th, 2022 city council meeting. Council, do we have any questions, concerns, anything you would like to see differently on the draft agenda for next week? All right, well, with that, we'll move it down to agenda item number six, which is public participation, and I do understand we have one.
Actually, oh, sorry. I was going to say, yes, there, there was a chat, you just mentioned it, it's the, the one item to public participation. Thanks, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, for agenda item number six is our public participation and we do have one public commenters, one public commenter and happy to take them at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. We're getting her queued up right now.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, I apologize if I interrupt again, but I just wanted to verify with the city clerk, was there somebody that wanted to make public comment on the previous item?
No, no, there was not. That was, I was just alerting the mayor that we had a public commenter for this item.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. T. Smith, you can go ahead and give your comments now. T. Smith, you can go ahead and unmute and offer your comments. I think you're still muted. Okay, go ahead and try to unmute again. We can see your camera on, but we're not getting any sound. All right, perhaps it might be easier, if you want to go ahead and type your comments into the chat, we can be sure to forward that information to the council. I'm sorry that you're having technical difficulties. I'm sorry that you're having technical difficulties. All right, Mayor, perhaps we can go ahead and move forward if we can get, um, he said, they said that they'll put it in an email, uh, that will be sent to you. So again, apologies for the technical difficulties.
Yeah, my, my apologies, uh, as well. And you, you can forward that to council@flagstaffaz.gov. And that'll send it to all members of council as well as, uh, our senior leadership team. And that's council@flagstaffaz.gov. So I appreciate it. That then brings us to agenda item number seven, which is our informational items to for mayor, council and city manager, as well as future agenda item requests. Let's start with those who are present at the dais. Maybe, maybe we'll do a, a, a different order than usual and start with Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, thank you, Mayor. It was seven years ago this month that, uh, we had a, uh, one of our police officers killed in the line of duty. And, uh, there was a memorial for Officer Stewart. This, when was it? Yesterday, I believe. And I went to that and, uh, met the officer's father and some of the, I actually met one of the officers that responded to the, uh, incident. And, uh, it was, I'm glad I went. I'll just put it that way. And I just want to thank all of our police officers for their service. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Um, Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you, Mayor. Wow, it has been a year and we're ready for a new year. And I just wanted to thank Team Flagstaff for, uh, all of your hard work making our city the most wonderful place on earth. And I can say this has been the most challenging year for me, but also the most wonderful. I have really learned to love our city more than I ever thought I could. And I just appreciate everyone's hard work and cheers to 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. Uh, Councilmember Solis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, uh, I was really honored that you called me to, to, um, do the pledge of allegiance earlier at the beginning of the meeting is because in 1945, exactly 76 years ago, was when the pledge of allegiance was adopted by US Congress today in 1945. So anyways, so I, uh, wish that, uh, 2022 will usher in abundance in terms of health and wellness, peace, love and joy to everyone, to every member of our community, to every member of Team Flagstaff and to Mayor and Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Solis. And I'll, uh, kick it, uh, to, um, Vice Mayor Daggett.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing from me tonight.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Shimoney?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I too would like to recognize, uh, Officer Stewart, who lost his life seven years ago. Uh, I wasn't able to make it to the memorial, but, uh, I'm grateful that to hear that Councilwoman McCarthy and hopefully others were able to be there. Um, I would have liked to be there. But, um, anyways, um, thank you to Officer Stewart and to the, uh, the rest of our officers for your service to our communities. A couple of weeks ago, there was also a, a community discussion that occurred about resources and needs in our community that was facilitated by an outside agency, uh, put on by local service providers. And I just want to, uh, appreciate the local service providers for putting that on for us. And I thought that was a good discussion. I, I was able to tune in, uh, virtually to that discussion. And I really appreciated the discussion that was had. Um, and then lastly, um, tomorrow, Working Alternatives Community Relations Board Meeting is occurring at 10 a.m. virtually. And if you're not familiar with Working Alternatives Community, um, they do great work, um, with individuals who are getting out of jail and reintegrating them into the community. And our former coordinator of indigenous in initiatives, Catherine Escavell, uh, is, is helping out with a lot of that work. And she is, Kat's doing a great job and so is their agency. So I'll be tuning into that, uh, 10 a.m. And then lastly, lastly, uh, Happy New Year's to everybody. Please be careful this New Year's Eve. Um, COVID is alive and well in our community and, um, is of great concern to myself and I know to this council. So please be careful out there and, and yeah, Happy New Year's to everybody. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. And cheers to 2021 coming to an end. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney. Uh, Councilmember Aslan?
Mayor, I believe that Councilmember Aslan, um, had to exit the meeting earlier this evening.
Okay, thank you. Uh, well, I'll just, uh, say that really, thank you, everyone. Thank you to all of our city staff for this year of many challenges that we've faced from fires to floods to pandemics to everything else that we have faced. We are, have developed and evolved so heavily over this last year. And, uh, I, I'm really excited for 2022 and what we can further accomplish to help our city, to protect our city. And, uh, I just am very thankful for everyone that has worked so hard this year for the sake of our city and organization. Aside from that, I will echo what Councilmember Shimoney has stated. We're at a very serious issue here, um, in our community. Just last week, we had less beds in the state of Arizona for ICU than we ever have in, since the pandemic started. Breakthrough cases are happening. Please mask up and please use not just a cloth mask if possible, a KN-95 and N-95, uh, because a lot of these cases are breakthrough. That's why I'm at home today is because I didn't, because of public health and a, a breakthrough case that occurred that I was in contact with late last week. Aside from that also, please be safe in the snow. We got a lot of coming down, uh, today and it's going to go throughout the week. So just stay safe, stay, stay safe, everyone. And, um, I hope you call in a very- And with that, uh, this meeting is adjourned. So thank you.